All right, so we'll have the invocation and I'll do it tonight. Father, we thank and praise you. We bless your name and we honor you. We know that we can do nothing without you, Lord. So we ask you in the mighty name of Jesus to come into this meeting, Father, and give us clarity of mind, Father. Clear our agendas, clear our hearts and our minds to come together to do the business of the city of Glen Arden. Father, we lift up each and every citizen in Glen Arden and we ask you, Father, to continue to bless us and move by your spirit in our community. We ask you, Father, to continue to bless our mayor and each and every one of the council members and their families, Lord. We ask you to bless the staff, Lord, that supports the city of Glen Arden, that things will be done in decency and order. We thank you, Father, and we seek your face this year. We know that great and mighty things are going to happen in this community, God, because we intend to build, continue to build this great community, the city of Glen Arden. We thank and praise you for each and everything that you'll do for us this year. We ask you, Father, to put a hedge of protection around the city of Glen Arden from all hurt, harm, and danger. We thank you and we love you. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, Council Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Ethan.
Present.
Councilwoman Harry.
Here.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
I'm sorry, I'm admitting her in now. She left, came back. Give me a few seconds. Okay, she's in, Council Clerk.
Councilwoman Smallwood. Councilwoman Smallwood. Okay, I'll come back to her. Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Present.
Thank you. Seven in attendance.
Thank you, Council Clerk. All right, asking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move to drop the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that was Williams to adopt and Councilwoman Ferguson is the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Council President.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Ethan.
Yeah, could I add two topics of discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
One would be election board status and the other topic would be new city website status. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, and I was gonna add election board status, but we are on the same page, okay? New city website.
Website status.
All right. Any other? Hearing none. Council Clerk, would you take the... I'm sorry, Councilman Williams.
Status on the Gordon property.
Can I get with you about that?
Yeah, I mean, you want to do offline, that's cool.
Yeah, okay, I'll get with you about that.
All right.
Show you some information. Okay. All right, um, let me admit one more person. All right, Council Clerk, would you take the roll for adopting the agenda?
Councilwoman Ethan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harry.
Yes.
You said yes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
I would say yes, and I would like for us to end the meeting at nine o'clock.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Seven in agreement.
Thank you, Council Clerk. All right, next thing on the agenda is the review of the minutes. I'd ask the council persons to review the minutes, and if there's any changes that need to be done, please address them to the Council Clerk at your earliest convenience. Okay. So now we'll move to legislation for January. And the first piece of legislation is the first reading, or is this the second reading? Oh, no, this will be the first reading. No, the second, for the ordinance to amend the personnel manual. Any discussion on that? Councilwoman Ethan.
Yeah, does this personnel manual include anything on a telework policy in case of emergency?
As far as I know, it does not. We've already scheduled a meeting with the Human Resources Department and the city manager and the attorney. Hopefully, we can bring those things to the table and discuss those at that time.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions concerning this legislation, I mean, this ordinance? And I have a question to ask the council. I might be, you know, not thinking this through right. But with this ordinance to amend the personnel manual, since we are going to sit down with the attorney and the Human Resources Department to look at the personnel manual, is it wise that we set this, that we table this ordinance until we finish that discussion and get those issues, if they'd like the telework policy or any other policy that someone would want to bring, that we get those things taken care of before we bring this to the floor to vote on it?
Council President.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
I think we need to move forward with this to put this bully policy in position. You can always amend the personnel manual to bring in telework or whatever other programs that you think is necessary to be included in the manual. You shouldn't have to hold the manual up while you're working on bringing in other policies.
But my issue, Councilwoman Smallwood, for asking that question is that we've been working on this manual for over a year now and it still hasn't, there's still a lot of issues that needs to be discussed and bringing it up to par. That's why I'm saying, I mean, to rush in, you know, now that we've got a meeting scheduled with the HR and our new city manager and the attorney to sit down and discuss these things, I'm just thinking that it would be, I mean, to go ahead and to adopt a personnel manual that is, a new personnel manual that's already over a year old, you know, and things have changed to, you know, just until we can get it, stay on it and until we get where it should be before we vote on it.
Council President. The council was given the personnel manual over a year ago to look at it, to give comments. Nobody gave any comments back. This bully procedure is very, very important and it needs to be implemented as soon as possible. We need to have a bully procedure in the city of Glen Arden ASAP. You have, you have staff members there using profanity throughout the building. You have to ask them to please stop using profanity. So this is a, this is a policy that really needs to go into effect as soon as possible.
Well, I understand that it needs to go into effect as soon as possible, but like I said, there's some other issues in the personnel manual that also needs to be updated. But I guess we'll wait till we get to that. Any other council members want to give me any enlightenment on this? Is that a path that, you know, I need to?
Madam President.
Councilman Harry.
This is only the first reading of this ordinance, so you still have 30 days to discuss whatever we need to discuss and make any changes before we vote on it again.
Okay, you said 30 days from the time, from today, or 30 days since it was?
Yeah. 30 days from when it's read into, read into, read into the record on next Monday, on 11. 30 days from January 11.
All right, thank you.
Because this is only a first reading.
All right, so we'll have to get to work on that. All right, so Council Clerk. Ordinance number?
Ordinance 04042021.
042021?
I'm sorry, 05.
All right. Thank you. Okay. The next resolution is a resolution to authorize, no, 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 that's not that. Sorry about that. Jumping ahead of myself. Here it is. A resolution to censor Mayor Estes for violation of the city charter. Any discussion on that? Councilwoman Ethan.
Yeah, I was looking at my notes and read through this resolution and I just wanted to make some comments for the record. During, in July 2017, when I was council president, I requested each individual council member submit three goals they would like the city to focus on for fiscal year 2018. Ms. Wilson actually submitted the goal of annexation. During the council discussion on everyone submitted goals that I facilitated, the majority of the council agreed to include annexation on strategic vision and goals. I actually developed a document, as you know, you all may remember this, where I actually had strategic vision and goals for FY 2018, which also included annexation on the second page. And then also for 2019, we did the same thing when I was council president. We identified goals for 2019 to focus on. I know you guys probably remember this and some of the citizens maybe remember this as well because we handed these out to show our progress. Annexation was included on both of these documents, okay? During FY 19, five council members volunteered to collaborate with Mayor Estes to form an ad hoc annexation committee. There would be Ms. Wilson, Ms. Smallwood, Mr. Williams, Ms. Ferguson, and Ms. Jones. All of these council members were part of a committee with Mr. Mayor Estes for annexation. I was not, I didn't volunteer for that committee. Councilman Herring didn't volunteer for that committee either. But that committee had five council members that did volunteer. That committee also, that annexation ad hoc committee, met with the city lobbyists to discuss annexation and to get guidance on what process the city could follow to do annexation. The city lobbyists actually met with the council in a meeting to, with the full council to discuss different options of what the city could do for annexation, different businesses, et cetera. Okay, I also checked my notebook for FY 2019 and I looked at my notes and basically Mayor Estes had monthly reports that included annexation for the work sessions and regular meetings for October 2019, November 2019, December 2019, January 2020, February 2020, March 2020, up until the time Mr. Herring shut down his city government. Okay, well, the thing is, this is a copy of his monthly report March 2020, and on page number two, he has Glen Arden annexation plan included. So I guess my concern is the signed contract in this resolution was dated November 2019 and it was never brought up to the full council's attention for further discussion for more than a year, even though annexation was included in the monthly report for over six plus months. So I just wanted to state that comment for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ethan.
Council President.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, it is true that I did bring up the, that was a goal that I wanted for annexation. However, if I may ask Mr. Herring, in his, in his resolution, I don't think he's dealing with the fact of annexation. I think the problem here is that the mayor entered into a contract without the council's approval. Mr. Herring, if I might, is that correct?
Yes, Councilwoman Wilson, that's exactly correct. You can have all the discussions you want on annexation, but you still, if a contract is being enacted, the charter is quite clear that it has to be approved by the city council. So that's what it is. It's entered into a contract without council approval. And we knew nothing about this contract because we were told that the services would be pro bono. That's what we were told. And then to find this contract later down the line, months and months down the line, we found out that a contract has been signed. That's a major problem. So yes, you're absolutely correct. It was, it's about the contract being signed without council approval.
Thank you.
Any other comments? The only thing I noticed about this contract, that it was addressed to the former city manager, Kenneth Jones. So it looks like that this company, the former city manager had knowledge of this contract. Why the mayor had to end up signing it is an issue, I guess. But this was, it was not like the city manager and I think with, I need to look at the POs. The POs were signed by the former city manager. So it wasn't like, you know, it wasn't like it was, and of course, none of the bills that I've seen came over $2,000. So, I mean, to me, it just, this was something that was actually, I mean, really done for the city. I could see if he was buying, on the corner buying watches and rings or televisions or something with the money, but the money did go for something that was going to benefit the city of Glen Arden.
Council President.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, I think the point is being missed because how many contracts do we allow the the mayor to enter into without any kind of repercussions? The thing is, is that if that's, if he wasn't supposed to enter into a contract without approval from the council, then he violated the charter. And so I'm not quite understanding why we're hewing and hawing on this and trying to bring in the city manager and all like that. Thing is, is that Mayor Estes' signature is on the contract. And, and he, and this is not the first time that he's done that.
Well, this is the first contract that I've seen that he's been accused of entering into. And there was also, I also saw an invoice where a council member entered into, I guess they'll probably say it was the acting city manager that did this, but at their direction, where we had an invoice that we received from a company about the MLK Park that was, this was, we already had a engineer slated for, to do this work and they were working on it. But for some reason, this company CCM got involved in the in the going to work. I'm sorry, just.
Point of order. Point of order.
Councilman Williams.
That may happen, but that's not relevant to this discussion. And we need to bring that up on a subject when, as, as, as an action item to the address. But the topic of this discussion is the mayor entered to a contract. And so since the mayor is here, Madam President, I'm asking if he would like to give his side of the story, why he did what he did? Why did he scratch out the name of the city manager? Why did he enter the contract and not let the city council know, if I may, if that's possible?
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Mayor Estes, would you like to respond to Mr. Williams' line of questioning?
Madam President, council members. Well, first of all, I was not prepared to have this conversation, but I will tell you that when I was trying to obtain legal assistance for the project, I was working with the city manager. But there became a disagreement about another issue and then it boiled over to where I wasn't seeing the mail or I wasn't seeing the notice from the the firm that they were ready to prepare for the project. And so when I confronted Mr. Jones about it, he was like, well, you know, you don't need to sign the contract. I said, well, we don't have a signed contract. It's been several months. And so I said, well, why don't you just give it to me, please? And that's how it became where I signed the contract because it had been held up by the city manager for whatever reason. And, you know, it just was another snowball effect of other issues that existed, which we all know about. As far as the contract signing and all of this, the charter was changed illegally. And so I'm not really certain as to why this is a big issue because, you know, the council has no authority to tell the chief executive officer of the city that they cannot enter into any more contracts. And it was an illegal decision that was made by the council. So I'm not really sure why we continue to argue and debate that issue. Also, the fact that we are so far away from other cities' allowance for entering into purchases necessary for the city and that we have to go through a three-month process to actually purchase pencils and markers is just ridiculous. So, you know, we're just trying to make a point that there needs to be some things that take place to change our procedures for purchasing and for how we deal with things. And however you want to censor me on it, that's fine, but I make logical sense as to how we do business as a municipality. And I think that the councils should listen out clearly to what are some of the things that we need to institute into the organization of municipalities to how we allow purchasing power of the mayor and the administration. And it's just absurd that you would go as far as to censor the mayor over an item like this. It's just ridiculous and it just shows the vindictive attitude of the council members. So that's all I got to say.
And I'd like to ask one other question, Mayor Estes, about this. The, these attorneys are, once again, land use attorneys?
That's correct.
And our attorney, he explicitly said to us that he was not a land use attorney.
That's correct.
City attorney. All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, let's be clear on that. Our attorney said that he is, he is not a land use attorney, but his firm handles, have attorneys that handle land use projects. As a matter of fact, when we were discussing it with him, they were doing a major annexation project with the city of law. So let's not sit there and say that we didn't have the access to land use attorneys because we were, because he had, he actually had them with his firm. And as for what the mayor has said, whether the mayor agrees with, whether it's illegal or not illegal, that's not for him to say. That's for a court to say. If he wants to take it to court and find that section illegally and have it stricken out of the charter, he should have done that. Our, our, our city attorney wrote that and it is, it is, it is legal to put that in the charter. And the law is what the law is. Because you feel that it isn't right, don't mean you can violate it. You know, it is what it is. So I'm not understanding what all that has to do with signing the contract. The law says you can't do it, you can't do it. If you feel it's not right, then you should have brought it to, you should have took it to the circuit court and had a judge strike it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring, but I also never got the feeling that, and I will ask our attorneys, that they just never, he never, he said he wasn't a land use attorney and he never offered his firm to do that, so that's something that I will follow up on. Thank you. All right. Councilman Williams.
I, for one, just want to say that I'm not vindictive. I'm just asking questions before making a decision. And Ms. Ethan gave a chronology of time from November 19, 19, I mean, 19, 2019 to March 2020. Reports were made and no reference of this contract being entered into or even discussed or even talked about to the council. That's a, that's a wide period of time, five months. Five months of, of reporting and no, I'm looking at the date and no notice or notice to the council that you did it. Or if you knew you were discussing it, why didn't you just bring it up and say, hey, let's do this? When we had a committee, we were working together. I don't know why we stopped working together. I can't remember. But that's all I wanted to say. But anything, I'm asking questions is definitely not from vindictive. It's just giving information. And that's why I asked you to state your case. Thank you very much, Madam President.
You're welcome, Councilman Williams. Councilwoman Ethan.
Yeah, but also the reason that I brought up the chronology is because this contract was signed in November of 2019, a year ago. It was brought to our attention in November of 2020, a year later. So my, my position as well is if this was an issue with a contract that was signed in November, why wasn't this brought to the council's attention? Not just by the mayor, but also by the council president. Whoever had a copy of this contract probably had it in November of 2019. They could have brought it to the council, had an open session, closed session, whatever. They could have brought it to the council, had an open session, closed session, whatever session, and said, hey, I have a copy of this contract the mayor signed. What does the public body want to do about it? No one ever had that discussion with the public body council until now, a year later. That's why I was bringing up the chronology. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason.
Madam President.
Councilman Harry?
Yes, just for the record, I knew nothing about this contract. All I saw were checks coming to me to be signed while I was council president that I said I was not going to sign because we had no contract with this firm. Then all of a sudden I was able to get a copy of that contract, which was almost a year later. I never even knew the contract was even signed, but I was able to get a copy of it almost a year later. And these checks, and during that time period, checks were coming up. And I actually said in the meeting that I was not signing, in the meeting that I was not signing those checks because we had no contract with that firm. And I said that in a public meeting and everybody sat there. So this, and the checks were not signed. So no, that, that contract was signed and that contract was not given to anybody until later on, almost a year later, when I found out, when I started seeing these checks rolling through in July and August for, for payment.
This one check was issued on six nineteen twenty twenty. The next one looks like it was August fourteenth twenty twenty. The other check, number five, was issued on May of twenty twenty. And the check number six was issued on February of twenty twenty. So they were, and I ended up signing them when I became council president because I felt like, what a citizen sent me this email that I'll read, he felt this way. He says, dear Councilwoman Jones, and he gave me a scenario, your nephew orders a pay-per-view event on your cable system without telling you. However, you still have to pay for the event because the bill is in your name. Failure to pay the bill could lead to a legal liability situation for a past due debt. I was listening to the public hearing recently over Zoom by the telephone. Councilman James Herring refused to sign checks for services that were provided to the city. You signed the checks later allowing the vendor to be paid. The mayor and the treasurer signed the checks previously. The person who was in the wrong in this situation was the councilman. He refused to sign the checks, could have put the city in a legal, I'm sorry, his refusal to sign the checks could have put the city in a legal liability situation. The vendor could have sued the city over this issue. Also, it was disclosed during the meeting that the mayor, the treasurer and the council president are the only people who can sign checks on behalf of the city. He feels like the mayor really didn't do anything wrong in this situation because of annexation. So.
Madam President?
Councilman Harry?
Yes, let me say this. I'm not going to sit here and break the law because one person sent me, sent me an email. You should have signed those checks because we did not have a legal and binding contract with that firm. We, we ran into the same situation when Mayor Estes, before he even got on the council, he signed a con, before he got in office as a mayor, he signed a contract with a firm and we had to get their attorney to send them a letter saying they will not be paid because he did not have the authority to sign those contracts. And that's what should have happened in this case too. I'm not going to sit there and allow, because one person sent you a contract, you're going to violate the charter? The charter is quite clear that no item shall be purchased in violation and the city should not be liable to any vendor when the purchasing policy is violated. And that's what was done in section eight oh nine, eight oh nine E. He violated the purchasing policy. He violated section four oh four where it says he cannot enter into a contract. So if you feel that one person can send you an email and encourage you to violate the law, that's on you. But I'm not going to do it and I will stand by that for as long as I live. I'm not going to allow somebody to encourage me to violate the law when it comes down to the city of Glen Arden and the city charter.
Okay, well, like I said, the first check was issued in February of twenty twenty. The next check, it looks like it was five twenty-two and the next check was six nineteen. So it seems like you were fully aware as council president that these things were out there and that there was a contract somewhere. Council clerk, would you give me a resolution number for this?
Resolution R seventeen.
All right. All right, that concludes the January legislation. Legislation for February will be a resolution to authorize a purchase tough book for the police department, a resolution to authorize purchase for an outfit, the outfit police vehicles, resolution to authorize a purchase of two police vehicles, and then another resolution to authorize the purchase of two in-car radios for the vehicles and one portable radio. So, all right, so we'll move on in the agenda to the.
Madam President?
I'm sorry, Councilman Harry, we're.
I just want to be clear, these, this, the legislation that you just read off will be coming to a public hearing in January though, correct?
And, and no, they'll be coming to a public hearing in February.
These, this legislation will be coming to, should be coming to the floor for a public hearing in January.
I'm sorry, yes, in January, Jan, in, 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 in two weeks, yes.
Can we, can we note that on here? On the agenda that this is for legislation, public hearing to be held in January so that we know?
Where would you like that to be noted at, Mr. Harry? Where is that normally noted at? I, I've never seen that on.
I'm just saying, if it says legislation in February, maybe dash, public hearing, January, whatever the date is.
So this will be something new that we're doing, Council Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Eason?
Ms. Jones, normally in the legislation, on the first section, you actually identify when the legislation is coming up for a public hearing. If you look at the legislation, there should be a line item that identifies when the legislation should be coming up for a public hearing.
Okay, this says, I'm sorry. Okay, it's not on there. It just has all X's. Okay, so we'll get that corrected for the next time that our legislation comes out like this, to put it on the legislation itself. Now, as far as.
Hold up, hold up. No, on here it says public hearing December the fifteenth, twenty twenty.
No, that was for.
Public hearing. It has December. In the copy that I'm reading for this resolution.
No, the resolution to authorize the tough, tough books for the.
No, no, I'm going back to what Mr. Harry is saying about the censure resolution.
I'm not talking about the censure, I'm talking about the other ones.
Okay, okay.
Okay, now. That feedback is something. So, Mr. Harry, you're saying that we need to indicate that on the agenda also under where it says legislation February, we should put a hyphen and put public hearing and the date?
Yes. So that we know that it needs to come for a public hearing because right now it looks like it's going to come for a vote in February.
Okay, Council Clerk, this will be a new procedure. And I think she, she understands what, what needs to be done. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So moving on in the agenda, we'll have the acting city manager's report. Chief O'Donnell?
Acting, isn't he the city manager?
Yeah, I know, but he said he would do it for the city manager this last time since he, the, the items that he's going to be discussing were from before the city manager really got on board.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
On November sixteenth, we obtained estimates for repairs on the electrical box for the marquee. On November seventeenth, Public Works obtained estimates for street repair in the eighty-seven hundred block on McLean Avenue. On November seventeenth, we changed the lock on the cable office and at some point we got to repair the door. It's damaged. On November eighteenth, Verizon responded to the building in an attempt to fix the telephone lines. They were able to repair some and will be back to repair the other ones. And I'll, I'll have to follow up with Mr. Thomas on that because I don't think they ever came back. On November twentieth, Public Works delivered Thanksgiving baskets to Glen Arden citizens. November twenty-sixth, Public Works put a tractor in the repair shop and we were advised the motor needed to be replaced. And since we are going to get two new tractors, we probably will not fix that. That's something that Mr. George and Mr. and the Public Works Director are working on. On November thirtieth, I talked to a citizen in Ward One that was concerned about closing the Glen Arden Parkway. I told him that that wasn't going to happen. On the December second, a citizen reported they fell into a hole on the Glen Arden Parkway and they were transported to the hospital. We reported it to the insurance company and we reported it to the housing authority. And I got an email today. I got to give to Mr. George tomorrow that they assigned a new person to these claims from legit. On December third, we followed up with the State Highway Administration of Reference to the SALT contract. That contract is now been executed and we did use it one time when we had the ICE last month. There was a lot of trash that was piled up on Evatt Street. We're working with the county to remove it and the Public Works Department has inventoried and cleaned the cable station. And that's the acting city manager's report.
Thank you, Chief O'Donnell. Is there any questions for Chief O'Donnell, Councilwoman Eason?
What was the last comment you made, Chief? The cable station was what?
We inventoried and cleaned it.
Okay, and then actually I had another question. You said that the door was, you changed the locks, but the door was damaged?
The door's not damaged. The door's old and it, the locksmith recommended be repaired. The mayor and I looked at it and we're in agreement that it's, it's getting to the point where it's going to have to be replaced pretty soon.
Okay, then I have another question. I believe I saw an email a while back stating that Mr. Butler's services were no longer going to be used by the city. The question that I have is that because Mr. Butler was able to access the cable via home, has anyone actually changed any of his access codes to access the cable station?
The mayor and the current city manager are working on that as we speak.
Okay. And then one more, the equipment. I know when I was council president, equipment was purchased for the cable that Mr. Butler may have purchased but got reimbursed. Is that part of the inventoried equipment?
Well, everything in there has been inventoried. I don't know when and where it was bought in the season.
Okay, y'all, somebody would probably have to look at some purchase orders and do the research.
Yes, ma'am.
Another question I had, the marquee for the electrical box, because I know that was one of the things that I had asked about. Do you know what the estimate is off the top of your head?
I think most of them were between four and five thousand, I think.
Okay. Now, and then a follow-up too. Is that just for the marquee or was that electrical box also supporting something else besides the marquee?
I'm not sure. I think it just supports the marquee. I'll, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, one more. The hole, I think you've mentioned that a citizen's filling the hole. Has the hole been filled in so no one else falls into it?
Yes, the hole's been fixed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for the city manager, acting city manager? I do have one question. I was reading over the code enforcement log. It looks like this one belongs to Mr. Thomas. And I was reading the one from last month and this month and it looks like he's been looking for a rooster.
There is a complaint of a rooster on Fifth Street.
Okay, so if, if, if there's, if there's a rooster in the, the, from what I understand, a citizen has identified where this rooster is, is, is living. Can't we just put something on the door instead of him riding? It says on here that he's been riding through the neighborhood to see if he sees any signs of a running loose rooster. But if the rooster is living on a person's property, I mean, I, I think the, the code tells us that exotic animals, as they call them, and farm animals are not permitted in the county or in the city of Glen Arden. We should let that neighbor know that, that, that animal cannot be in the city instead of trying to, I see him running around someplace?
Well, I'll get an update tomorrow because Mr. George and I are meeting with the code enforcement officer tomorrow. So I'll let you know.
Thank you. Right? Any other questions for the acting city manager? All right, hearing none. The chief of police's report?
All right, well, on November sixteenth, I met with the manager of the Woodmore Town Center Commercial Area. We discussed patrolling during the shopping center for Black Friday and during the holiday season. I made contact with the owner of the Hampton Inn. They did hire a security guard so the thefts up there virtually stopped. And they had a couple of teen parties up there, like they were having the National Harbor, but we shut them down. I did have a conference call with the general manager and the regional director of the Hampton Inn. Actually met with him in person and they do have security up there now. But they're talking about cutting back on it, so I got to have another meeting with them. Had a conference call with the collection agency that we're working on and going to do another proposal to the council probably in the next couple of months where we will submit a proposal for them to collect all the outstanding traffic tickets. That's all our parking tickets and all of our camera tickets. We did conduct an undercover operation at the Hampton Inn. And unfortunately, a subject came in and tried to break into a car and when he seen us, he took off at a high rate of speed and we cut the chase off because it was too dangerous. But everything's quiet up there now. On November ninth, officers arrested the subject on Roland County Drive for domestic assault, possession of drugs and possession of firearms. We were notified by the Metropolitan Police that the gun was used in a homicide and that subject has now been charged with homicide in DC. On November twenty-fourth, officers assisted the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office in the seventy-nine hundred block of Johnson Avenue, serving a felony warrant. Again, we talked to the collection agency. Lieutenant Robinson attended the coffee club meeting for me. I had another commitment. Also, I sent everybody an email today that the coffee club meeting is Wednesday at nine o'clock. I sent you the Zoom link. Met with some people in Woodmore Town Center. We talked about patrols over the holiday season and we had, we had very low crime during the holiday season, very surprisingly. Very little crime in the shopping center and almost no crime in the community. Officers assisted elected officials on shred day and we are hiring two new police recruits next Monday and that's my report.
Any questions for the police chief?
Yes, Madam President?
Councilman Harry?
Yes, Chief, I just want to, just want to, just for the record, the police cars that you intend to purchase, they are coming from a, a vendor that does business with another municipality or the state of Maryland?
Yes.
Okay, just want to, just for the record, I just want to make sure, since we're. Okay, just for the record, I just wanted to make sure, since we're invoking that policy, Section eight eighteen of the Charter. All right, thanks.
Madam President, could I ask the chief a question, please?
Councilwoman Wilson?
As city, okay, chief, as Acting City Manager, you received a report concerning the goal room. And I read over that and I'm not sure if this is saying that one person, one staff member works the works the goal room or works the event on Sundays, the church service on Sundays. So is that in the goal room or is that in the community center?
I don't think we're having church services on Sunday. We're having any services at all.
Okay, I was just reading what was in the December twenty monthly report.
I think what's happening in the goal room is that Ms. Duckworth is actually booking events and following them as we go through time. So when the pandemic is lifted and they eventually open the buildings, we'll have some events that are built and then her two assistants come in one or two days a week and they clean the goal room, they clean the bathroom, they clean the hallways. That's the only thing going on there now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chief concerning the police report? I have one question, Chief. You bringing in two new police officers? That'll bring you up to nineteen people in your?
No, we'll have seventeen full-time and one part-time.
Oh, it'll be seventeen. I thought it was already seventeen. I guess seventeen.
Probably counting the part-time guy.
No, I'm counting yourself and Jackson and Robinson. So that's seventeen.
Yes.
Oh, so it's going to bring it back up to seventeen again and then one part-time?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be the treasurer's report. Mr. Bratton?
Yes. City Treasurer's report includes a statement of revenues and expenditures for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty. November, we have revenues of four hundred thousand ninety-four dollars and expenses of two hundred forty-four dollars. These activities resulted in the year-to-date total revenues exceeding the year-to-date expenses by one million six hundred eight thousand three ninety-one. Since we were able to pass the budget, we were able to pay out the hazard pay to the affected employees. We also were able to obtain the PPE, masks, gloves, hand sanitizer for the citizens. And we submitted reports and received reimbursement from the county for the hazard pay and the PPE. We also paid out retroactive COLA payments to employees on December twenty-third before Christmas. We submitted the information requested by the auditors to date. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bratton. Is there any questions from the council to Mr. Bratton concerning the treasurer's report? Councilwoman Eason?
Yes, the audit. So I think you just said that you submitted some information for the auditors?
Yes.
So where exactly are in their process? Because the due date is January thirty-first. And one thing that needs to happen before that audit report goes to the state is that the audit report needs to be presented to the council. And then it needs to be presented to citizens and a resolution needs to be passed to accept that audit report. So are all those things going to be built into your timeframe so that the audit can be delivered by January thirty-first?
Well, the timeframe is with the auditors, but we are all aware of that.
Well, actually, the timeframe, the, okay, let me back up. The audit report is due to the state. You got an extension through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. That's the deadline with the state. So are you saying that if you and the auditors can't get this done in three, one, two, three weeks and four days, you're going to ask for another extension?
If that's necessary, yes.
Do you think that's going to, do you think you'll be asking for another extension? Based on what you know today and additional meetings that we have to have with the audit after it's completed? And then a meeting with citizens so that the auditors can actually go through the report with the citizens and then a resolution that we have to pass to accept the audit report before it's sent to the state?
Sounds like a tight deadline. We may need additional time to get all those meetings in.
But do you think the audit itself will be done? Okay, so what is your projected timeline? When do you think the audit is going to be done without the meetings? Required meetings?
The auditors are working on it. I probably would say maybe two weeks.
The nineteenth? You saying January the nineteenth?
Two weeks from now would be my guess.
That's January the nineteenth? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council President, you may want to well, I guess the only thing you can do is probably get a resolution together. You can't do anything with it yet. But just know that one has to be that those things need to be done. Once the audit is completed, the auditors have to meet with the council and the mayor to actually go through the audit report and the city treasurer, city manager. And then it has to be signed off on. And then also, a meeting has to be held with the public to accept, so that the auditors can go through the audit. And a resolution has to be voted on to approve the audit. And then after a resolution is approved, it goes to the state.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions from the council to the treasurer concerning his report? Councilman Harry?
Yes, Mr. Bratton. A question, is the audit being done virtually?
We are, yeah, we are submitting information electronically to the auditor.
Okay, so they're not coming to the office at all, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I do know that now it is being done, now audits are being done virtually. It is taking a little longer than it normally would if they were actually in the office. So, I mean, you may want to reach out to them because I don't think two weeks, I don't think they'll be finished in no two weeks. I honestly don't believe that. Are they still requesting information from you?
Well, they requested information last Thursday, which we got to them today.
Have they done all the tests that they're going to do, the testing that they're going to do?
Well, I can't answer that question.
Right, because they may just come back with some other things if they found something. Okay. So I think if I were you, I would reach out to them and just ask them where they are with the process because as I said, even with my audit, I know it was going to take longer now that they're not coming to the office and that everything's being done virtually. And handling all of their clients like that, so it's slowing down the whole audit process for everybody all the way around, so. I just wondered. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city treasurer concerning his report from the council? All right, hearing none. We'll move to topics of discussion. The first topic of discussion is the cable. Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, I'd like to know, on December the seventh, I asked for an update of the uploading of the recorded retro minutes of meetings to the cable. And you said that it is in process of being worked on. And I'm not quite sure what that meant. So what is the update now? Because on December the tenth, you reported that you were waiting for a target date from the mayor. And Mr. Herring suggested that you contact T-Spec to upload to cable. And you agreed that you would do that. So where are we exactly? Because the citizens are requesting action.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Mayor Estes is on in the Zoom meeting. I will give this over to him and let him explain what's going on with the cable TV station. Mayor Estes, would you give us an update, please?
Sure. Also, I will invite the current city manager and Tim George, if he's got a minute, to also piggyback on what I have to share. After reading my notes, I guess the thing that I'm a little concerned about is there's some sensitive information that I had provided you and Ms. Ferguson. So I'm just going to summarize where we are with my meeting with this consultant that's a television consultant, cable television consultant and video specialist. So let me kind of just read you the briefing, brief notes that I have for that meeting. I met with two TV and video specialists to assess the situation in the GCTV studio. We reviewed the existing condition of the studio setup and the equipment situation. So initially, we worked on the following. Providing a combination of sound and video for the bulletin board that is currently live. Evaluated solutions to resolving the lockout that exists on the main computer. We are, have talked to T-Spec about that. We did a workaround, but I don't think we resolved the actual lockout if it's a repeated activity. Unless we switch computers. We identified the necessary criteria to update the studio's controls. And then we discussed strategy, which is a little monotonous and more technical. So one of the things, though, that I did want to bring to the council's attention is that based on what I've observed is that they are recommended replacing the monitors that are in the studio because the screens are burnt out and you cannot read the content very well that's on the monitors. So we're going to have to replace those. If not, we should go back to what they have existing, which is called a confidence monitor. And it's built into the system that they already have, but he kind of overrode it and purchased some monitors. But he's had them on forever that they're no longer, you cannot read what's on the monitor. So we did get the Zoom on the computer. However, we're uncertain because we haven't had an opportunity to experiment to see if the Zoom meeting is viewable with audio. And that's the problem that we're uncertain about. We can actually show the Zoom meeting live on the bulletin board. But I'm not sure of the audio because we haven't had a chance to experiment with it yet. I've basically have requested a rough budget and a preliminary budget for what could be the ultimate change. Also, T-Spec was needed to get in to see if there was any new software needed for the computer. They did not see a need to replace the software or the computer. And he easily installed the Zoom. And we also added some new passwords. So we can talk in more detail in other meetings. But right now, one of the problems that we have, and maybe Tim can talk more about this, is that if we're going to use these engineers to get us back up to speed and kind of get our old contractor out of our hair, it's going to probably cost more than two thousand dollars. But I've asked them to start with a preliminary budget under two thousand dollars. And kind of see if that's something that we could live with until we get to a certain point where either we're going to spend like three months doing a RFP or we can go ahead and approve this group and do incremental payments to them based on the services that they provide. So, Tim, can you speak? Are you able to talk in the meeting?
Yeah, well, I think you summarized it fairly well. The big issue, T-Spec has been out to the building several times. They first came out, tried to work on it. One of the modems went bad. They had to go back and get some new equipment to get everything running. They've been able to give Leah some connectivity from her desk. But we're still having trouble getting the Zooms loaded into the system because they've got to get the password. They've got us into the computer, but they can't get us into the actual system that they were using to upload content to the drive. So Patrick with T-Spec is working on that. His latest thing, this is last week, he was going to go into the server room. The monitor on our server doesn't work, so he had to go back to his office to try to remote connect into the server then to get back to the computer kind of from the back door to see if he could work his way through that password problem. And Leah and I have not had an update from him. That was Wednesday or Thursday, Tuesday or Wednesday of last week, and then, of course, we had New Year's Eve. So we're hoping to hear from him tomorrow to see what the status is on trying to kind of unlock it. The problem is, we can get into the computer, but we can't really fully get into the software that allows us to upload content into, you know, onto the cable channel. So we're still kind of efforting that. We're putting out a couple of feelers, like the mayor said, to technology companies that might be able to come in and basically get us through and up and running. And then maybe do an assessment as to what other improvements need to be made to the system going forward.
So I have a question, Mr. George. You're saying that the software for that was what, LogMeIn, and we can't get in because we don't have the password?
Yeah, that's my understanding, and that's what T-Spec is trying to see if they can do a workaround. We had a password that was left for us, but when we tried to use it, it didn't work. So T-Spec is trying to basically get into that system, which would then allow us to really access and upload videos, do what we need to do.
All right, any questions from the council? I'm sorry. Councilwoman Ferguson, I saw your hand first, then Councilwoman Eason?
Either Mayor Estes or Mr. George. Has anyone attempted to contact Mr. Butler? When I was speaking to him, I guess a month or so ago, in reference to his payment, he did make mention that he had he had access to get into the system. I mean, even as we spoke that particular night. I mean, he said all he had to do was just, it would take him an hour to get in. I mean, to do everything. He was still saying that he could put things on the cable from his home, and that was in November or whenever it was. We were talking about appearing his payment for the services that he had rendered to the city. So he did tell me basically that he could do that. Have you attempted to see if he would give you the password?
I believe the chief did reach out to him and chatted with him and he I believe the chief did reach out to him and chatter with him, and he he was willing to do that, but it was gonna cost between $1,500 and $1,700 to engage his services, which is why we were looking for other other vendors that might be able to do a similar thing for either the same cost or lower cost.
But that login equipment, the log me in and software, it belongs to the city of Glen Arden. If I'm not mistaken, I've seen invoices where we did purchase, he purchased it and we reimbursed him. So, okay. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Ms. Easton had a question. Councilwoman Easton, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, Mayor Estes, I mean, I hear all of what you're saying, which is good. It's the first time I'm hearing all this, which is good. But I think it would have been nice to actually have it summarized so I can actually, you know, figure out what your overall goal is. Because it sounds like you're trying to do some different piecemeal type things. But I don't know what your overall goal is, what you're trying to accomplish, because I didn't hear that stated. That's the first thing. And the second thing with the Zoom meeting is nothing more than an MP4 file, which you should be able to load MP4 files just like any other MP4 file. However, one of the things that I highly recommend that I mentioned in the other meeting is some of those meetings, somebody actually showed pornographic images during the meeting. And I would make I would highly recommend that you all before you put them out there to make sure that you edit the pornographic material from those meetings. Otherwise, your cable is gonna be blasting pornographic stuff all throughout the county, and you're gonna be hearing from someone else wanting to censor the cable. So I would highly recommend you do that before you start publishing any of the meetings. Unfortunately, I didn't write which ones were interrupted, but I would just say you may want to add that to the list before you post anything.
Yes, ma'am. We'll certainly do that.
And then hold on a second. I'm not finished.
Excuse me, Ms. Easton. I'm so sorry.
Point order, Councilwoman Wilson.
I said I was sorry. She doesn't have to be nasty.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Please proceed.
I'm not nasty. Apology accepted. Okay. And then I think you mentioned that right now you're trying to go in through the software through the back door because the service provider is basically refusing to give you the password to get into the city's system. That's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Unless you pay him.
Yeah, and the chief might be able to shed, I think he spoke to Mr. Butler, he might be able to shed a little bit more light on it. But that's my understanding is that he, if we sign another contract with him and basically pay him some money, then he'll he'll help us back into the system.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, um, maybe, once again, I don't I don't going through backdoor systems is not my forte. But maybe if you can get them to go in and maybe do a password reset and reset it to a default, then maybe it could reset to a default, then you can reset it. But once again, that backdoor systems is not my forte. Thanks.
Well, from my talking to the technicians, this isn't something that isn't new. So it'll be something that can be easily resolved, but it's gonna require us having either a purchase order with a contractor or we have to solicit to bid it out to do a whole redo of the studio since we're now in in lockdown, you know, so.
Okay, I'll say just keep us posted. Thanks.
All right.
Council President?
Councilwoman Wilson.
Now, may I speak?
Councilwoman Wilson, yes.
Yes, okay. I just want to say how disappointed that I am to hear that nothing really has been done to to get the the system up and going for citizens who do not utilize the Zoom. And for those who were depending upon seeing the meetings on the cable. And I have been asking about this since October, not just last month, but since October. And all that the mayor to me is giving is proposals, things that he wants to do, that he's we might have to do this, we might have to do that. But I'm saying that Ms. Easton just stated, well, it shouldn't, it's not that difficult or whatever. So why I'm not understanding, why didn't we just go and utilize what we had until we got to some other place? So that so that the citizens would be able to view the meetings on that have that have been recorded on on Zoom. I'm just not quite understanding. It's like you have a certain group of people who are now in the dark. They have no, you know, they they might not have any other way of knowing what's going on in the city, of knowing what the meetings are going on in the in the in the meetings. But you have blocked them out. You've locked them out. And I don't think that's right. I really do not think that's right. So I just want to let you know just how disappointed that I am that we're right here. We're still in the same place that we were back in October. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. But just to say this before I move to Ms. Easton. With technology and just like with the website, some of these things just don't happen overnight. And if the the password is being held, to me, it sounds like for ransom. All right, I'll move on. Councilwoman Easton?
Yeah, just correction, like I said, the going through the backdoor is not my area of expertise, so I'm not claiming it. But I know that when I took a course at one of the locations with a Zoom file, they actually had their Zoom files posted with the voice, the voices on there. So once again, I don't know what the cable man, you know, how he loaded content, but I know he was able to load content. But I'm disappointed to hear that he's actually not providing the city the password to the site for money. I'm disappointed to hear that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, Councilman Harry?
Yes. Let me say, I want to echo Ms. Wilson. You know, this is 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 gone a long time, and I think if we would have used caution and 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 not sit there and try to end the contract that was still valid and come in here and stop payment and not pay a vendor for months on time, we wouldn't be running into this issue. You know, it's 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 a terrible thing that there's no communication going out on that bulletin board, which most of the seniors look at. Most of the seniors look at that bulletin board. You know, I mean, recently, we got notification that Zion Church had been given a $3 million grant to issue grants for rental assistance and mortgage assistance. I know Ms. Smallwood, somebody reached out to Ms. Smallwood about a coat giveaway for people during this pandemic. I know we've had food giveaways, and none of this stuff has been able to reach our citizens because we don't have cable and nothing's going up on cable. Now, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we're sitting here talking about proposals, consultations, and all of this other stuff, when we need to just get it up and running so that we can start posting some of this information up here. I mean, there's a lot of things going on during this pandemic, a lot of services that are going on out here, testing stations that are opening, places that are closing, and people need to be be made aware of this stuff. And we can make giveaway, uh, 2,000 PPEs that we can do a mailing and also the other sort of other notification would be cable. And we're talking about proposals and bids and all this other stuff. I mean, if 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 the contract wasn't illegally terminated originally from Mr. Butler when he had it, we wouldn't be in this situation. But to sit there and hold up his payment for months at a time and then sit there and say, okay, give me the password and everything else. I don't know whether he had the password or not. I'm gonna reach out to him and find out. But um, but 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 to sit there and do that and then sit down and 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 say, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed that we as a community would sit up and hold up a man's invoice for three, four, five months. And then to sit there and not pay him and say that he he no longer has a contract with the city when he did, to take it upon himself, the council president, as a matter of fact, to be exact, to take it upon ourselves to say, we don't have a contract with the city. He don't have a contract with the city when we did have a contract and his contract don't expire until 2021. That's disappointing. Because we need information put out to these citizens that program as Zion Church was giving out with assisted a lot of people, $3 million with rental 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 assistance and mortgage assistance, you know, coats given away in wintertime, you know, food drive, I mean, food giveaways, all of that stuff could have been posted on our marquee in our in our cable station. So citizens, you know, we can get some assistance from during this time. I mean, a lot of people out here are hurting, and it seems like we're not trying to do anything to help them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Just wanted to just say for the record that I did state that I spoke to Mr. Butler and I did on several occasions, and we had conversation. And he did tell me that he had the password and that, again, he can get in it just from his any location. And if he didn't, if he couldn't do it, then his help would do it. So I'm just I'm just saying that that's what he told me now. Now, if he say he doesn't have it, then that's something different. But I'm just saying that's what he told me. And that's the truth. Yeah. All I can do is say what he said. I'm done.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning this this issue for the concerning the cable? All right, hearing none, we'll move to commercial vehicles, parking restrictions. Councilwoman Ferguson?
Okay. Um, last month, I received a call from a citizen who was representing herself and her immediate neighbor concerning a bus that was parked. It was a mock 12way bus, a commuter bus. And I called Mr. George, and then I didn't get him. So I wound up speaking with code enforcement. So he wound up going over there. I don't see it in this report. But he ended up telling the bus driver that he could park there. The bus was clearly marked. It's like a trailway bus, so like a grayhound bus. And so my question is, I know that, and it's it's marked, and he also, the same driver also uses a either park a 16 faster van there. I mean, that hasn't happened since the situation, but I just maybe some council members can help me. Because between me looking at the ordinance and looking at the charter of vehicles and traffic, chapter 149. And it states, even 149 dash 43, that even talks about certain restrictions of parking. And Hay Street is one of them, the northeast and the east side of Hay Street. But in the ordinance, it talks about commercial, it says, commercial vehicles. And then it also, on the last, on the 950, it talks about commercial vehicles. And then it begins to list. It lists like, or trailer, a tractor, trailer, or trailer combination. And and it says the weight is in a gross weight in excess of one and a half tons. So one ton, one and a half tons, so that would be one ton is equivalent to 2,000 pounds. So that would be 3,000 pounds. When you talk about commercial vehicles, so does that exclude, I mean, does that that's that doesn't have anything to do with, does it or doesn't it have anything to do with people's personal cars? Because you have cars like a Cadillac Escalade can weigh anywhere between 5,600 to 5,800 pounds. A Jeep Wrangler can weigh 4,500 pounds. My little car weighs almost 600 pounds more than the 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 1.1 and a half tons. So could somebody give me a clarity on when it says commercial vehicle? It says commercial vehicle or other tractor trailer and tractor trailers. And then again, the weight, I think the weight, I mean, the weight is, again, 1.1 and a half tons. So that's some cars, the average car weighs weighs 1.5 tons. So can someone help me with that? Because all the other, the issue was that the code enforcement literally so said that he could park there. So the other thing I wanted to ask is that, you know, could we maybe add in there, add some more like commuter bus or a school bus and and things like that? Because there I've seen school bus parked in the city for a time, and a school bus can weigh 15 tons. So my question is, again, do that one and a half tons exclude personal vehicles, number one? Can anyone help me with that?
Madam President, if I might, it does exclude personal vehicles. Really, when we're looking at commercial vehicles, we're looking at vehicles that have signage on the side, stickers or magnets basically showing that they are a commercial enterprise, having roof racks with ladders. Now, a regular, I have an F-150 pickup truck, which is well over that limit, but it's personal. Just putting a ladder rack on my truck doesn't make it commercial. But you need to have some sort of signage to indicate that you are a commercial operation. Clearly, buses of any size are commercial vehicles and are not allowed to be parked on city streets. We've had a discussion with code enforcement about that to clarify that that point. And I know that that vehicle was found another day and was issued a citation for parking in the city. And hopefully, we won't have to see him again doing that. Yeah, the the limit is a little low, one and a half tons, as you said, is 3,000 pounds. That's that's pretty light. So generally, any commercial vehicle is illegal. And but certainly a bus, the large, you know, you know, trailway style bus is really not permitted anywhere unless the specific property owner, a private property owner has given them permission to do so. They can do that on private property, but they they have to have authority of the private property owner. Like if a if a shopping center wanted to let them park in the back of the lot, as long as they give them permission and it's a private lot, they can do that. But in the case where we gave them the citation, he had not received permission from that property owner. And he was issued the citation and was told to move his vehicle along.
Okay, the other question, okay, like a, I call it a box truck, a truck equivalent the size of a large UPS truck. That's like six tons, it could be six tons, if, you know, it's a delivery truck. But but it say it doesn't have any writing on it. Then then we could go with the weight.
Right. And also, the commercial ordinance also gives, if you look at the county ordinance that we also follow, has a cube, a cubic footage. So it's, I believe, and I'd have to verify, but I think it's 300 cubic feet. So basically, any box truck that is that large or larger qualifies as a commercial vehicle and is also illegal.
Okay, so with that, with my concern, everything was answered. So I was wondering, in some of the areas, could we maybe tighten up, put more of? Or do you think it would be necessary to put like, like I was saying in B, it says, no person shall park any commercial vehicle or other tractor trailer or tractor, tractor, trailer, or tractor trailer combination, having a gross weight in excess of one and a half tons upon any commercial property unless the vehicle is registered. I mean, it goes, I mean, that's just one, but it goes, it gives different areas of parking and things like that. It's basically saying the same thing, it just addressed different areas within the the city. But my question would be, do you think the weight should be increased? And also, should we add in, be more specific? You know, like I said, actually add the words commuter bus or school bus or whatever. Or do you think that's not necessary?
I think we've been interested, if you like, what we can also do is take a look at the county. We can also look at some of our peers and see what they've done. And I'm happy to work with code to kind of put together a little summary for the council's review and consideration. And I'm happy to work with code to kind of put together a little summary, uh, for the council's review and consideration to kind of let you know what, um, our peers are doing and make some recommendations as to what we might want to do. Uh, that we can discuss at a later date, and I can certainly get with, uh, President Jones to see when she might want to put that on a future agenda.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Ferguson, you read the part, I didn't, you didn't read it just now, but you read the part about enforcement. Whereas any city police officer or code enforcement can enforce these regulations because I think we have, most of our problem is with enforcement. Uh, and, and most of these, uh, vehicles show up on weekends or holidays when there's no code enforcement. But maybe we need to, uh, have our police officers also address these issues when they see them, like, uh, I saw a dump truck one weekend that was parked right there at the circle of Wegmans, uh, Jeff and, and Glen Arden Parkway, so it's right there, not at Wegmans, the circle going into the Woodmore, uh, uh, homes. You know, and it was parked right there at Jeff Road and Glen Arden Parkway. And it, uh, citizen told me it had been parked there most of the weekend, but, uh, there was no, there's no enforcement from, I guess, I guess if our officer, I'm sure they have to, they would have seen it if they were going to the Wegmans, but most of our issue, I think, is, is, is the weekends when there's no code enforcer because our day code enforcer on Saturday, he's off at three. So mostly on the weekends is when we have these issues with, with these vehicles showing up in the city of Glen Arden. So I, I think enforcement is also an issue that needs to be, uh, looked at too.
Um, and it was, um, let's see, chapter one forty-nine, um, under vehicles and traffic, article three, parking, uh, regulations, one forty-nine dash twenty-two A, says, "Every duly authorized police officer of the city shall attach to any vehicle found to be in violation of this article a notice to the owner thereof that such vehicle has been parked in violation of the provisions of the, of this article and instructing such owner to report to the office," and then this is what I, I don't know what this is still, I mean, could be changed or not, but, "and report to the office of the mayor and city council during regular office hours thereof in response to such violation. Each such owner may, within fifteen days of the time when such notice was attached to such vehicle, pay at the office of the mayor and council, and city council to the clerk in charge thereof a fine as penalty and in full satisfaction of such violation." And then they have some, they have B and C, but I, so, um, I guess, um, that's where I've read about the police officers. Um, but that's again found in chapter one forty-nine dash twenty-two, and that, um, uh, letter A reference police officer.
But most of the fines are paid to the police station, aren't they?
Um, Chief?
Chief O'Donnell, when persons receive a ticket concerning something in the city, don't they come down to the police department? Or do they go to the finance department to pay? What's the procedure, policy for that? Where do citizens pay tickets?
They pay at the police station.
Okay. So they don't come to the mayor or the city, city council? Councilman Williams? I'm sorry.
Can I have to, um, ask the chief to, um, say what's happening with the commercial, um, vehicle licensing under, um, like a truck, SUV, what is the judge's doing and said it was, they gonna enforce and not gonna enforce? Um, that our laws, when it comes to, uh, commercial vehicles, say a car, SUV, step van, or whatever?
Well, uh, we had a big push last year on commercial vehicles, and when we went to court, the judge threw all the cases out. But that doesn't necessarily mean every judge will do that. Uh, we also had, one time, we had a lot of cases in court. Uh, we sent one of our attorneys there and, uh, they talked about how they felt that our ordinance wasn't specific enough.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted, I just said that to because I think, uh, we have a law on the book, which again, I didn't think it was wise when we passed it to have, uh, just because your car got some writing on it or carved wrapped, that would say, a car that is wrapped or has some signage on it is, will be outlawed in the city, that just doesn't make sense. Or a truck, that's, this, this doesn't make sense, and, um, and then most of the judges, or all the judges that threw all the cases out, is, what, what particular ton over was over, three, uh, three tons? Chief?
Well, our, our ordinance is three tons, but like, the county's ordinance is ten tons.
Ten tons, ten tons, okay.
And mostly your pickup trucks, not your pickup trucks, but your box trucks start off at about ten thousand pounds, and then, uh, those are the regular enclosed trucks.
Right. So, um, and it, it become an issue of asking the police to enforce something that's not going to be enforced when it gets down to paying, paying the fines. And that's tying money going to court and for code enforcement officers and police officers. And it's, you know, so in the long run, we need to look, revisit that. So we won't put the police in a position of enforcing law that most judges or judges thus far has not been enforcing our laws. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
But my, my, my position on that is, okay, the chief already knows what, what he can and cannot enforce, or what might be get thrown out of court. But there are some vehicles like that, that, uh, trailways bus that was parked. That's, I, 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 I'm sorry, just a second, chief. That's obviously a violation. The dump truck was obvious violations. Those things that they know that, that they are in violation, sure, but I'm not saying go around looking for, uh, uh, pickup truck with writing on it that's under the weight and, and not the square feet. I'm just saying those obvious ones.
Correct, correct.
We absolutely positively enforce the big trucks. Absolutely.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this, um, commercial vehicle? Councilman Harry?
Yes, the original intent of that legislation was to get these commercial vehicles off the street. People who come home with their work vehicles and they do have the, the, the three-quarter tons and, and, and larger trucks that park them in the neighborhood, for, for instance, the, the house down at, uh, at the bottom of Delwood and Hayes, who will bring home those, uh, commercial glass company trucks, bring home four of them, and park them in front of their house. Their workers will come, park their cars in front of the house, take the trucks back out. And it was just using that circle down there as a, as a little storage room, storage area for their trucks, which is denying citizens who pay property taxes out here the right to be able to park in front of their house or have people visit their houses. We get a lot of complaints, especially on streets like Fisk and Delwood, where these commercial vehicles, and they're not the big commercial vehicles, are parking up and down the street, taking up parking spaces there. They take, they're parking in their driveways and everything is overflowing to the streets, and that means that people cannot park in front of their house. Or if, that visitors can't park close to their house, they gotta park and walk. That was a whole issue of this, is to, is to remove some of these vehicles from this community so that the citizens can have somewhere to park and the visitors, visitors can have somewhere to park. I think if you run in the business, then you need to, that's the price over here to storage of your vehicle. You know, um, to sit here and, 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 and parent to a business versus the citizens who live here and pay taxes and who want, who want a quality of life that's gonna allow them to have visitors that come to their house and not have to walk a block and a half, since we got a lot of these seniors that walk a block and a half just to get to their home. You know, it, it's ridiculous. So to, to, I wouldn't raise the tonnage, and I think enforcement is needed most, uh, uh, mostly on all of them. I mean, let them, I mean, they throw them out, they throw them out, but at some point, I mean, one, I, I could have sworn one of the issues was that the ticket wasn't, the ticket book wasn't correct, so they had to update the ticket book because it didn't have the right verbiage on it or something like that. So I mean, until we get it right, I think we need to continue to enforce it and, and, and let people know that you cannot park these commercial vehicles in the city, it's getting, it's getting out of hand again. And citizens are complaining again that they have nowhere to park, that their relatives, their friends have nowhere to park when they come visit them because we got all these commercial vehicles that park in the city and they sit there for three and four days, especially on the weekends, as, as it was, as it was stated. And, you know, it's just taking up a lot of parking space and people can't enjoy their homes and people can't enjoy people to visit their homes. So I think we need to continue with what we got and make it work. I don't think we should strike it down, I don't think we should raise the limit, one and a half is, is, is enough, I feel. Um, and we need to move forward enforcement.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Um, I think that we can, uh, raise it a little bit, but even if not, one of my main, major concern was still tighten up, um, on, uh, the list. Um, uh, as far as what, I mean, because it says again, "commercial vehicles," or even put more, um, explanation as to what constitutes, I mean, now, Mr. George, he explained it and, and, and what a commercial van is, I mean, um, vehicle is, but it's not in our ordinance, even when I, um, referred, uh, the ordinance to, um, to the, uh, citizen, he still had a problem with that. Then he went to like, well, my car weighs more than this, and so of course, that's some of the reasons why, and I was asked the question as well. But definitely, I don't think it would hurt to add in, I mean, because clearly even one of our workers, you know, argued down that the bus could be there and it could park anywhere in the city because it's public, it was a public, um, 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 uh, street. So even with an employee or, you know, or one of the code enforcers reading the ordinance, it, it, it could clearly state, you know, no commuter buses parked overnight or no, uh, like, um, like I said, I've seen a, um, a school bus, um, and it may not have been a school bus, um, I mean, a church, it was a church, um, but it was the level of a regular, uh, yellow school bus, but I think they was using it for ministry, but it was parked. And that on my list um, is, uh, fifteen to seventeen tons by itself. But it's not listed there, um, and it didn't have any, you know, I mean, it just had like a little, uh, sign in, in the windshield, but it didn't have, it wasn't really marked yet, I, I don't think they had, um, customized the, the truck, I mean, the, um, bus, but it still was there. But I know it probably qualified as far as the footage. But again, I, I'm just saying that I think that it would help, that way it wouldn't be no, uh, no problem, um, with what is allowed, I mean, just to add a couple more things and just to tighten up the, um, explanation or the, uh, uh, to describe the vehicles. Commercial vehicle, exactly what that means, with markings on it and things such as that, because everyone don't, don't know what that is, um, the citizens. That's it.
Thank you.
Maybe some, MC, how you doing?
Hey.
Councilwoman Williams, thank you, I, I got you. All right, any more discussion on the, uh, commercial vehicles? Hearing none, we'll move to the next topic of discussion, uh, the election board. Uh, once again, uh, Mayor Estes probably has an update on the election board, Mayor Estes?
Yes, hi, um, Mayor Estes again. So, um, in the last month or so, um, I have been recruiting volunteers to participate on the committee. I have currently about, uh, eight members that are interested. However, uh, there needs to be some more diversity as far as which community the membership, uh, should be on the committee. So, uh, was gonna hopefully start up after the holidays, which is today, uh, recruiting from a different, uh, part of the city to see if I can get other new people interested. Um, the former, uh, chair of the election board does not wish to be on the committee again this year, but she has turned over all her material to our, um, executive assistant uh, with notes and comments and information for us to use with the new committee. And she's also, uh, volunteered to sit down and, and have a meeting with the committee initially at a kickoff meeting or a startup meeting of sorts. So my agenda was to, uh, in the coming week or two, schedule a meeting with, uh, the volunteers who are interested in being, uh, on the committee. Uh, and also to continue trying to recruit from other parts of the city. So with that said, I was hoping to reach out to the, uh, council members who might know of any volunteers from other parts of the city who may be interested in being on a committee and, uh, letting me know by, through me and through you, communicate who you would recommend to be on the committee. Uh, so we, we're gonna move fast on this, so we got a, a timeline of events that need to take place, and we're behind time already. So, um, we're gonna be jump-starting very shortly here, and January and February will be our busiest months as we start to begin that committee's, um, going before uh, it gets too late into spring. So that's where we are right now.
Okay, any questions for the mayor concerning the election board? Councilwoman Eason?
Actually, Ms. Ferguson was first.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Thank you, um, mayor, when, um, do you need to, um, have the names of any, uh, volunteers? I mean, when it's the latest?
Did you freeze Mayor Estes?
Yeah.
Okay, ASAP.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so just, um, send the names to you or have them?
Yeah, just send the names to me and, uh,
Send me your email or what?
Well, what I'd like to do is if you can, just provide me with their contact information, which is their home address, email address, and their full name and a phone number.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, um, I believe that we have to pass resolutions for everyone to be on the election board.
Well, yeah, okay, um.
Okay, so let's, if the election is May, that's when the election, uh, May the fifth, around that timeframe, and you work backwards, you, you have a very short window.
We're very short, I mean, I'm not denying that the board did not start on time, which should have been, uh, early January of, uh, last year. You know, so we're almost a year behind.
Hmm.
So.
And, and the only reason I mention in this is because, you know, um, when the board is approved, then, um, at the same time, they may still need to order things and everything else because this year will probably still be in a COVID-type situation. So, you know, the, the, the shorter your window is, after you get them installed, the shorter their window's gonna be for them to order the materials that they need for an election in May. If this is January right now, we don't have an election board in place.
But it's like,
February, March, April, May fifth, you got three months and the rest of January, so we'll give, I'll give you four months to get a board in place so that they can actually go and, um, identify what it is they need to do or whether that is, um, letters that need to be mailed out or machines, they need to actually figure out their process.
Ms. Eason, uh, do we need? This isn't, I, when you, you know, you say, the way you say it, it makes it sound like it's a countdown to disaster.
No.
And you're not really, you're not offering any assistance.
No.
As to what would do under the circumstances.
Mayor Estes, um, once again, I apologize, but that's part of my IT background. In IT, we als- we always look at the deadlines that we have, and then sometimes we work backwards to actually see what we can get done, and then we have to put together mitigation plans. You know, if the deadline is May the fifth or whatever that date is for the election, you can't change that date. That's, that's a date that you cannot change, which means you have to work backwards to figure out what tasks you need to do with the committee and then get those tasks completed. And once again, it's it's at a shorter timeline now, because there's some things that they will need to do, like place orders for things. I don't know the timelines that it's gonna take to order printed letters or machines. I don't know that information, maybe um Ms. Whitaker, I think she was the president last time, maybe she can give you some idea.
You know what the procurement rules are?
Right, but I don't know what the election board needs. That's for the election board. Right, but I guess Mr. Estes, what I'm saying is, the election board, they have to have resolutions to put them in place. Um, you can get them together and they can identify what their needs are, it's good that Ms. Whitaker is gonna help out, because she was the um, the lead last time, but you have a different caveat this time where, you know, I don't know if the people are gonna be allowed to go in the city hall or not. Some people may not wanna go in the city halls, which means you were gonna have to send letters like what they did in the county and the state. But that's not for me to decide, that's for the election board members to decide. That's what, that's what their purpose is. To figure out how to, you know, go through the and do the task needed for an election. So I'm not saying it's as, oh, it's it's oh, you know, like panicking. What I'm doing, when you hear me talk like this, I'm basically talking, and once again, I forgive my IT background. You're looking at a deadline, which is May the fifth or whatever that date is, and you have to meet that date. Unless you're gonna change the election, and I don't know if you're gonna do that, because the charter says when the date of the election is.
No, we're not.
That's all I have to say. And you say you have eight members now or eight volunteers?
Yes.
How we go with that?
Um, I think it says you need to have ten, but I my thing is if you have eight volunteers, they could have been coming to the table like right now. With their names, if they're volunteers.
Yeah.
I mean, I know you wanna meet with them ad hoc, but my thing is get them on board with a resolution passed to bring them on board, then they can officially get started. And then they can start making decisions, because they can't spend any, uh, we finally got the budget approved, thank goodness. But there is funds for them to get, you know, their stipend and also to, you know, identify their needs.
Right.
So like, that's all.
And of course, all good committees need great leadership from council members to volunteer their time.
Um, actually, the election board committee council members don't get involved with the election board.
That is correct.
Yeah, the council is not supposed to get involved, the council and employees are not supposed to get involved with the election board.
That is correct, my mistake.
That's all I have, Ms. Jones, thanks.
All right.
Madam President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, because uh we, we need to stop following the charter, because the charter is, is is actually a whole different scenario in this situation. Um, section seven oh one C says, notwithstanding the provisions of subsection A of this section, if there exists any vacancies on the board of elections within six months of a regular election or at any point prior to a special election, the city council shall appoint as many citizens as required to ensure a complement of ten members. Right now, we are within six months of an election. The 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 appointment of uh election board members now falls to the council, according to the charter. There are no appointments and no one can start, and no one can start anything in the city of Glen Arden, no committee member until they're sworn, until they're approved by a resolution, it's sworn in by uh the mayor. So right now, the 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 election board appointments are in the hands of the city council. Because we are within six months of an election.
Okay, even with that, uh, Mayor Estes, you can, I guess, give the council those eight names, and then we can find two other persons and uh uh come up with the resolutions and appoint those people, because we need to have an election board in place by the end of February.
The mayor can recommend those eight names, but the the final decision to appointment is decided by the council.
I understand that, Ms. Councilman Harry, but like, just like I said, he can give us. I guess he's done. Okay, um. All right, so we know where we are with that. Um, any other comments on the election board?
Yeah.
Councilman H- East, Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, my one, if if um Mayor Estes has the names, then I would just recommend, like what you were saying, get the names, get resolutions together, um, maybe they can come forward in a um a public hearing probably for February, I guess. And then um in the meantime, look for a couple more names. So that you can, so you know, so you can get, I think, um, to get at least ten.
Okay, so if any other council members has two other names, I would appreciate those names.
Um, Madam President.
Councilman Harry.
Again, will you please refer to the charter? The charter says the council shall appoint a minimum of two representatives who reside in each ward and have been nominated for appointment by their respective council member. Please read the charter, please follow the charter. In violation of the charter.
Councilman Harry, if you know two people in your ward, Councilwoman Smallwood or Councilwoman Wilson, uh, if you know two people in your wards, would you please present the names? We'll look at the names that the uh the the mayor has and see what wards they're in. Is, there's nothing, uh, there's no, there's no, um, not following the charter, Councilman Harry.
Madam President, you just read, you just shown that you were not gonna follow the charter when you first. Then when I read the, the resolutions, then you, when I read the res- when I read the charter, you sat there and changed and said, okay, now we're just submit eight names. Then you changed again when I read, they said that it had, the minimum of two have to come from each ward. So you're just going along to get along until you find something that you can stick to. My thing is this, follow the charter. You will be okay. You're choosing, President, I have the floor. You're choosing to do what you feel is in the best interest of the mayor and what the mayor wants, that's what you've been doing constantly, instead of following the charter. You know, and 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 my thing is this, the charter says who does the appointment, who does the recommendation, and there are seven council members. Why didn't you ask the other four if they knew anybody? Or have they already, have they already selected some people?
Councilwoman Ferguson said she was looking for, gonna had people that she wanted to submit, and I'm sure if Ms. Eason has someone, she'll submit them. And if I find someone in Ward Three, I'll submit those persons also.
Okay, well.
We don't know where the 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 persons that Mayor Estes has, we don't know what wards they're in, that's why we're asking him to submit the names so we can look at them so that we can follow the charter.
Okay, well, Madam President, just so we can be clear on this, since you say no one helps you, maybe if you were to express yourself in a way that if any council members know of anybody that wanna be on the election board, please bring their names forward and make sure it's different from a certain ward. Instead of just pointing out me, Ms. Wilson, and Ms. Smallwood, there's seven council members, you should have said the council, if any council members know of anybody. Uh, the constant point, the constant pointing out of me, Ms. Smallwood, and Ms. Wilson on everything, every issue that you have that's negative.
No, it's positive. That was a positive affirmation.
Because it's it's the council, this is a council body, then you should say the council, because there's other, there's seven members, not just three.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. All right, uh, we've discussed that topic, uh, please uh submit to me any names that we have. All right, moving on to the next. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ferguson?
I just wanted to clarify that, um, I had, um, had mentioned, um, about um where we were with the um election board um to the president. And so I did mention that I had asked someone, um, and they was get back to me. And um meanwhile, I was supposed to find out when and when they need to let me know. So, um, I'm just assuming that uh Ms. Jones didn't call my name out, because I had already um talked to her about that, just just today, so, um, um, yes, we do have seven council members, but I just wanna clarify that, um, that's what I believe, the reason why she didn't call my name out, because we talked about it today.
Done. Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. All right. Uh, now we'll move on with the uh new city website. Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, I just wanted to let um council members and um the mayor's citizens know that I'll be scheduling meetings with um the committee um to work on the site map, and what we're gonna try to do is get the site map completed by the end of January. Because that's what Revise is, hoping that we can complete the site map, and after we do the site map, they can actually um move over some of the content um from the old site to the new one. So I'll be uh scheduling some meetings for the month of January for the website committee. And I'm mentioning that because some of the folks on the committee are in this call. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason.
So, Madam President, Madam President.
Excuse me, Mr. Harry, just a second.
Madam President.
Councilman Harry.
So let me ask this question, so why was a meeting scheduled in July, August, September, October, November, or December? Why is the business that it is not moving forward when meetings could have been scheduled in July, August, September, October, November, or December?
Meeting for what, Mr. Harry? Pardon?
For the, we're talking about the website, aren't we?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Eason?
But maybe it's, meetings were not scheduled in um, you know, some of us, because the thing is, when you shut down the government in March, April, May, June, and July, there was phase one that had to be approved by the council before we could move forward. So after we had that meeting where I presented phase one, which was designed to the council members, got their approval, I've been meeting with the committee, and we've been going through the next phase. Thank you.
Um, first of all, you, the the council approved your phase one, which wasn't really necessary to continue moving forward in July. So, October, November, and December, you scheduled no meetings. And as a matter of fact, let me just say this to be quite clear, because you keep on saying, I closed the government down. I did not close the government down, I'm only one person. The council chose, voted to close the government down, because you chose not to come to the meeting, you weren't there. So the council closed down the me, closed down the government, I can't close down the government.
I'm sorry.
But get your, get your facts right, and again, July, August, I mean, July, August, September, October, and December, you could have held meetings. Your your phase one was approved in Au- no later than August. So September, October, November, December, when the government was opening, you had Zoom and it was functioning, you scheduled no meeting. This co- this, this, this uh website shouldn't have taken no more than six months, no more than six months, and you've been going, we're going on a year and a half.
Just a moment, Councilwoman uh Eason, I just wanna make I just wanna clarify one thing, the council did meet in an emergency meeting to send employees home because of COVID. We did not vote to close, to shut down the city. There's the city of the business, the business of the city was still going forth. So no, we did not vote to shut down the s- the 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 city of Glen Arden's business, but to send employees home for, because of COVID. Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, um, regarding the meetings, um, I think he's asking about the additional meetings, but I think during that time, we were having budget meetings like two and three times a week. So several meters, uh, several members on that committee are also um in these meetings. Uh, but I didn't wanna overwhelm folks with so many meetings every week to go with the website, so it's gonna get done. The folks are still working with me, uh, from Revise, there's not a problem there. So, um, you know, the site will be done. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you, Ms. Jones, for clarifying that I did not shut down the city. And so, Ms. Eason, your statement is completely incorrect, because the city was not shut down. I don't have the authority to do that.
We didn't have no meetings, though.
People work remotely, people, everybody worked remotely, and Ms. Jones, you need to stop lying again. People work remotely, everybody was set up to work remotely, and people still came into the office, people still got paid, police continued to work, public works continued to work. Uh, the bus continued to pick up people, so for you to continue to tell that lie, makes you out to be a liar.
I'm saying that we didn't have any council meetings.
If for you to continue to say that the city has been shut down, as he said, makes you out to be a liar, because the city was not shut down.
You have to always come to the meeting with contentious behavior. Point of order, Mr. Harry. Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, basically, um, Mr. Harry may be correct, he didn't shut the city down, but he didn't have any council meetings for April, May, June, and July, when council members were requesting meetings um and other folks were requesting meetings, and I even requested, you know, so that I could get phase one approved, so, um. So I don't have any other comments to make about this regarding the website, it's in progress. Thank you.
All right, so that was our last topic of discussion. Uh, like I said, Councilman Williams, uh, I will get with you concerning where I am with the Gordon property, and then we can bring it to the council. It is now uh nine oh seven, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a blessed evening and thank you all. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, thank you.